For which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item number three, any citizens desiring to be heard? Yep, hearing none. We'll move on to item four. Consideration of possible action to approve minutes of December 3, 2018.
I'll move with you.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Item five. Meeting with ODOT representatives for discussion of SERP projects and funding. We really appreciate you all coming today. One of the... We've got a couple of questions. I've probably got more questions. I've got a few myself. But what started this was the offer to provide an extra, I think around $600,000, to the Luther Road project. And so what we wanted to do was kind of have a discussion as far as what our priorities were, knowing that we've had some people leave ODOT and some new people come in and all that stuff. And we just wanted an opportunity to catch up and sync up promises that have been made in the past with what reality looks like in the future. We understand that SERP funds have been depleted by our legislature and some of their actions to the tune of around, what, $230 million over the last three years. That's affected the projects we can do. But again, taking all that into consideration over time, this last year, we put together a SERP five-year plan and we had some priorities established there, which the Luther Road project was on that list as well. But so what I'd like to do, I'd like to start with where we kind of got into another project that the county's expecting SERP funds for that we, as far as I know, and as far as the board knows, we haven't received funding for that project. And it was contingent upon receiving SERP funds to do it, and that's the I-35 interchange project. That started back in May. We had Daniel Gwynn from ODOT. I sat on the ACOG board up there and we were talking about that. And so he and some other ODOT folks came to our meeting that day. It was on May 7th. And so we talked about the project and it's several million dollars total. And we didn't take action that day on that because we wanted to look at the contract because it looked like it committed the county to providing funds, whether or not we received any SERP money or not. So being a little bit gun-shy of our rug being jerked out from under us over the past three years, we didn't want to sign up for a financial commitment for just county general funds to do this, although we all agreed that I-35 interchange needs to be a priority for us because it's something that needs to be expanded. So anyway, we went through all that with Daniel and Chad Meisenberg was also, because he represents ODOT up at ACOG, I guess. So we tabled that until we modified the agreement and sent it to our attorney. And basically what the agreement said was, we will sign up for this based on the availability of funds, SERP funds being made available to do that with. Okay? And our understanding is that this utility relocation and the right-of-way, the additional right-of-way acquisition is supposed to start this summer. For completion in 2022, I believe. So it's starting this summer and it's supposed to be finished in 2022, the whole interchange, right? And this is all being done by ODOT engineers and that sort of stuff. So the question is, if we were... I was wondering about accepting the $600,000 for Luther Road project, which needs to get done too. But it's a lower priority on our list that we agreed to than the I-35 interchange project. And we haven't seen anything on it yet as far as funding. So I was wondering, can anybody from ODOT speak to that for us a little bit and kind of maybe reassure us that that project's going to get fixed as well? I think that's kind of where we're at. That's where I'm at and whatever the other board members got.
I guess the question, is this $600,000 going to knock out or what are we projecting? I mean, bottom line is the question.
In the five-year plan, the right-of-way utilities for the I-35 interchange are scheduled for fiscal year '20, which would be this coming summer. We actually even discussed yesterday about possibly looking into seeing if environmental was done, if we could move those, move that up to this year so that we could get started on it and maintain the project readiness along with the ODOT side for the highway part that they're doing.
If I may.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
In our conversation yesterday at ACOG after the meeting, apparently Coltrain, the phase on the north side at Two Miles, has now been scheduled to let for bid January the 17th of this coming year. But if we're going to be putting SERP money on that, do we not want to delay that and put it on Waterloo project because that's our highest priority? And I think I've kind of addressed that question to Marvin there.
Well, Mike, I mean...
Do we do that and blow that off until such a time?
Going back to our August meeting, the Waterloo project is not our highest priority. The Coltrain project was.
Right.
Number one, and then number two is the I-35 project.
Right. Oh, I see. I see. I'll apologize about that.
No worries.
So anyway, you're on.
So, yeah, so $3 million for the Waterloo I-35 interchange project that's supposed to start this summer is... Are we going to squeeze the... Where are we going to squeeze that lever? And I guess that's kind of what I'm curious about.
As far as SERP funding goes?
Yeah.
We'll get SERP funding for the new year, January 1. And there are SERP funds in the statewide account currently.
July 1.
Right.
What did I say? I made July 1, sorry.
Okay.
I was thinking Jan...
I guess the Monys Creek Bridge project is... You're good with what's going on there on that?
Okay, great.
I don't have a problem, you know, with the Luther Road project. It needs to continue. I understand that the cost was... The cost to do that had changed because...
That's my question. How'd we miss it by $500,000? I mean, maybe that's a body of...
Well, I think what we're trying to do is acquire this extra, this $500,000. There was $100,000 in preutilities and right-of-way on Luther Road project. I'm not really working on that project from an engineering standpoint, but they, after the... I guess the engineer went out there, did some looking around and survey reflected that there was quite a bit of gas line out there. And I've been working with the gas line company on that project and actually got them to negotiate a little bit and work it out that there's not going to be any relocation. It's going to be all abandoned. If they went with the relocation process, if we're looking at about $2 million, would you blow it out of the water? So we convinced the gas company to abandon all of that, redirect their plumbing, you might say, to avoid that hope for...
Of course, that's the way the growth is going and that's going to be a win for everybody.
That's a win for everybody to get the gas company to be able to just abandon it and clear out of that hope for war.
And a million and a half cheaper.
And a million and a half cheaper.
But they just missed all the gas lines after on their first...
I'm not sure how that was initially established, but, you know, just try to soften the blow and get it, you know, better for everyone is to convince the gas company to evacuate the area.
But you're sure we're going to have the funding for Waterloo? Even if we do this $600,000 adjustment? That's all I need, you know?
I've just got one other question. And that is, over the last several years, the last four years that I've been here, we've been given a dollar figure per year of what the county's SERP allocation is. Last, this last fall, when everything changed at ODOT, the ODOT local government at that time refused to tell us how much money we had as a county for SERP funds, to manage as a priority from the board's perspective. And that's the way we do work here is we manage that from a perspective. We've had the same issue with our CED manager who's supposed to help us with that information. We still haven't received anything on that either. But we would hope that hopefully in January, when the new allocation comes out that...
July.
I thought you said January.
I did and I meant July. I was...
Okay, so the Waterloo Road project's not going to start until after July then? Is that what we're...
Yeah, I wouldn't think you would need the money for that until after the beginning of the fiscal year.
And again, I think part of that is being driven by ODOT Transportation Division, which we've got to follow their lead.
Yeah, no worries there. We just, when we were talking with Mr. Gwynn back in May, he said the utilities, right-of-way and utilities are scheduled to begin in the summer of 2019. So I guess after July would be the summer of 2019.
Just fiscal year '20.
That's correct.
Okay. All right.
Now, sir, did their agreement, you mentioned earlier on that if SERP funds were not available, you're on the hook for those costs with...
No, no, we're not. Absolutely not. No, that's... We went through our ADA. Not only are we not on the hook for them anymore, but Oklahoma County isn't either. Because when they heard that we were making a contingent agreement, they decided to do the same thing, so.
Yeah, we're not sure what Oklahoma County's going to use for their source of funds. Right now, there's nothing in their SERP plan for this project.
I understand. The... There was a bridge project that they used a lot of SERP funds on, but it's probably going to keep them off the project list for a few years. Okay, so anyway, back to... Before we put another five-year plan together, we would like to know how much money we've got to work with as a county. This thing of, well, it's magic and we'll tell you what you can do. We kind of don't like working that way.
That part is a little tricky since the legislature allocates these SERP funds by ODOT Field Division.
That's fact.
And so, and we contract with all the CED boards to work out whatever sort of allocation formula they deem appropriate within those dollars.
Yeah, I'm not sure. There's no legislation that requires that to be done. That's kind of a gentleman's agreement between some people at ODOT and some people at some CEDs. Because not all CEDs do that.
Yeah, well, the original idea was to go into agreements with each of the circuit engineering districts to help ODOT assist with the five-year plan development.
The CEDs are there to assist the counties.
And to assist us.
No, no, absolutely not. You're not in a cooperative agreement with the CEDs.
We are.
Legislative Code even actually calls out that the plan is to come from the CEDs. The CEDs are the ones who are to work with ODOT.
Well, you're going to have to show me that because I've read a lot of that legislation before. The point is, we enter into cooperative agreements as counties together for the mutual benefit of the counties.
If you just come up with a dollar figure to help us on this, that would be great.
And...
Now, this year when we do rebalance with you all, we're going to work much more closely with the CED, so we're much more involved with you all.
If I may, I need your three names for the minutes. If I could get them, please.
Melissa Davis.
Two S's, one S.
One L, two S's.
Mark Scott, S-C-O-T-D.
Brendan Dudgeon, D-U-D.
Brandon.
Brendan, B-R-A-N-D-O-N, and then D-U-D-G-E-O-N. That's me.
Okay. Anything else on item five?
I appreciate you all coming out.
Yeah, I really do. Thank you a lot.
Did you ask my last question real quick?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The other project that's been brought up as a question is your Crescent Creek Bridge. Where does it lie on your priority list for you guys?
Number three.
It's... Yeah, it's the third one down the picking list.
I'd actually talked with CC this morning. They were the designer on it. They're working on refreshing up the plans. So that one is as close to shelf ready as we've got on a project.
It's shovel-ready.
So are you guys going to want to put that one on the shelf to be let as soon as possible? Or do you want to wait until Waterloo's done?
Naturally, I would like to have it done, but I'm sure at least you would like to put it on the shelf.
No, I'd like to get it done. Not necessarily, yeah, because, you know, everything's going to change. We've got a new session coming up. We don't know what SERP's going to be doing.
I'd say put it on letting.
I mean, supposedly this money was there at one time. And when we put those four priorities together, because that's why we only have four priorities instead of 10, right? Because if we had more money, we'd have more projects going. Because, you know, we've got another mile of Waterloo and we've got a few more bridges and we've got several other things.
So I guess answer your question one. We'd like it on the letting.
Sure.
Get it there.
But can I?
Go ahead, ma'am.
So if we're going to let Coltrain in January, if I heard that correctly, then you must have some ballpark idea of what that's going to cost and we have that money available in our SERP. So that's bringing me back to saying, when we filed that plan and had all of that done this summer, we got told zero as far as how much money we had to allocate. But there must be some idea how much we have if we're going to be letting. So can, do we have a ballpark of what is sitting there with Logan County's name on it today that we're letting against?
Well, ODOT is, at the moment, on our statewide budget balance, we still have some projects we need to fill in. Our goal is to utilize the budget authority we have this year. We don't want to leave any SERP budget authority on the table for the legislature to look for.
Logan County was pushing for that change years ago to prevent what happened from happening. And I don't mean to be rude. I'm sorry. I wasn't meaning to interrupt. I guess I'm just saying that Monys got a bridge ready to shovel-ready. It's going to be estimated to be $1.2 million. We've got Coltrain that's going to let. So somewhere, somebody has a dollar amount that we're letting against, or we couldn't go to let in January. So there's got to be, even if it's a temporary kind of a ballpark wide box, that we have dollars assigned to some of these projects, that nobody ever trickled that information down to us. I think that's the point that they're trying to say is, we signed the agreement to add another $500,000 to Luther isn't going to be a problem, but is that $500,000 going to end up impacting one of these other projects because we don't know where the funding is at this moment in time?
The short and skinny of it is that Coltrain is going to go ahead and put Division 4 because we monitor things on a division-wide basis for division balances. Coltrain is going to put Division 4 into the negative. And we realize that and we understand that. And our goal, as Mark just said, is to use up all of our division or all of our budget authority for the program. And so in May, whenever we get to that point, then we're going to use any projects that we can to use up that budget authority. And then reassess, whenever we rebalance next year for our next fiscal year starting, that's whenever we'll be reassessing the balances of each division to rebalance with.
So Brandon, if Coltrain's going to put us in the negative, how are we going to do my bridge project? Does it rob the money from different divisions?
Again, if you could have that ready for the May letting, the May letting is the last letting that we could book our current fiscal year funds. And at the moment, we're looking for projects to fill that gap. So you've got an opportunity here to take advantage of.
It's shovel-ready right now.
It is. And this is what we're telling everybody. We're looking statewide for projects to, the last thing we want to do is end the fiscal year with any sort of budget balance for SERP.
Okay, so my question to that, which, I mean, it's great if we can get these let and done and know that, you know, they're going to actually materialize. But then July comes and you rebalance the books, do we all of a sudden get told, well, you know what, there's not enough money and since we did this bridge and we did Coltrain, Waterloo's now pushed back five years because you guys overspent? Because that's what's happened in years, in recent past with some funding.
So I just like your tech money.
No, no, and I understand, but what I'm saying is when you look at the allocations, because this is how it's come back to this board on different years in recent history, that, well, this one, meaning this county or whatever, spent more than they should've. You guys got less, so now we're going to pump you up. If all of this rebalances, and I think, Brandon, you're nodding your head. I think you might understand what I'm trying to say here, that when we look at the rebalance after July and we go, well, we did Coltrain and we did this bridge and, you know what, there's just really not enough money out there like we thought when we were trying to fill this gap. So what you've got on your list is your next, is Waterloo. It's going to get pushed back.
Because you said Region 4 had overspent. You didn't say Logan County overspent.
Exactly.
Okay, so which kind of brings us to a different topic is, who in Region 4 has spent more money than they were supposed to be? But we don't need to get into that right now. But I think that's kind of where we're going with this is, you know, where's the accounting back to, you know, the counties that this whole project, this whole thing is supposed to be helping us all, right? All the 77 counties, that's what SERP program's for, right? Is to help us. And so there, I know there are counties kind of like us that are kind of in the dark with where we're at right now.
If you're all feeling in the dark on financial information, on what you've accomplished in the past or the funds that go to Division 4, we can prepare a special report for you all that details every transaction that we've done. You've mentioned that a couple of times, that you seem to be stark for information. So we certainly remedy that.
And I say that because I'm still waiting for emails that I was promised. They were not promised by ODOT directly. They were promised by CED from last summer when we were trying to redo our SERP plan. And I kept being told, I'm going to email, I'm going to email, I'm going to email, and I'm still waiting for that information. That's just being honest.
Okay. We're working on a kind of a standard packet of information we're going to send out to every county.
So that would be nice.
We'll kind of give you all the detailed, high-level view of what's happened, what's in your current plan. I'm not sure this has got mapped to you either, but this is a published version of the last five-year plan, or the Transportation Commission approved. So while we were here, I just want to make sure we had, if that's okay, we're going to present that to you all for your thoughts. As a starting point. And then we'll follow up with a personalized report for your county on what we've done in the past and we'll show you what's been done for the other counties. And those, it's very difficult to keep those expenditures even across the board year to year. But over time, they will tend to equalize.
And I think the...
And hopefully that's what we try to do when we're looking at a rebalance of the five-year plan, to take that into consideration. And we did look at that briefly yesterday. Logan County, yeah, other counties in Division 4 so far have gotten more funding than Logan County. So Coltrain will help equalize that a little bit. And going forward, that's the goal. Try to equalize that over time.
To answer your question about whether or not going ahead and letting Skeleton Creek, would go ahead and slide Waterloo back five years or what have you, whenever we do a rebalance, the answer to that is no, ma'am. We, in your five-year plan that you guys prepared with all of these projects depicted and shown in them, all four of them, you were able to build all four of them within the next five years. So regardless, within the next five years, you've got enough money to be able to build all five, all four of them, excuse me. The ACOG funds coming in for Coltrain, help that. They go ahead and help that balance to increase and make it an even more abbreviated timeframe to be able to build all four of these projects. And then our big thing that we can, we continue to stress to everybody is getting projects ready. We would personally love to have two years of projects on the shelf and ready to go. That way we can have it worked out every single year, what projects we're going to let and when they're going to happen. That's fairly unrealistic to say, but that's what ODOT stateside tries to push for. They try to have a number of years worth of projects on the shelf. That's not quite as feasible for our program that we've got going just because of the different constraints that we do have. But we do try to stress to everybody to get your projects ready. And as Mark was saying, it will end up equalizing out over time between the counties who have spent how much. And we can give you a comparison, as Mark was saying earlier, about showing how much that each county has spent in comparison to Logan County. You guys are just shy of $8 million that you have encumbered two to eight out of the program in comparison to other counties that are nearly twice that or over twice that.
And that's prior to Coltrain getting refunded.
So that's kind of what you said about hoping Oklahoma County earlier, that big bridge, so they're not going to have another project for two, three years.
Is Oklahoma County in Region 4?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, that's right. Yeah, I remember that.
Do you have this report where you could email it to me so I can have a copy in the minutes, please? Thank you.
All right, but thank you. Yeah, I'd love to plug that bridge in there. I got several more if you want to put them in.
Seriously, we do have an opportunity for this May letting to kind of equalize things if we have projects or expenditures ready to go and they're in the plan, we can plug those in because we're going to, our goal is to zero out the budget.
We don't want there to be any money for the legislature to take.
I figure, from what I heard with DCP there on those pipelines, they can probably have that shovel-ready by May.
Oh. As soon as she says giddy up, I'm foregone.
It'll take them a hundred days. I figure it'll take them a little while to get moving.
All right, thanks again.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item six. Consideration of possible action on approving supplemental and modification agreement number one, SERP project agreement for Luther Road project, job number 29367, to increase utility costs to $600,000 tabled from December 3, 2018. Enter name a motion.
I'll move.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Motion passes.
Appreciate it.
All right. Items seven, eight, nine, and 10. And also we've got a spreadsheet to look at.
We haven't even opened these yet.
I know. As we open them though, I would like to just kind of get through that. What we probably, as we normally do, is to have those, put in spreadsheets.
To table, yeah.
Table it.
Yeah.
Unless there's only a single bed or something.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Item seven, co-pat... Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask you to pause for one second?
Sure.
Do you want to take a copy of this supplemental with you today?
Yes, ma'am.
Give me just one second.
Yep.
You missed your meeting? I told you I was going to a meeting. Appreciate both of you coming.
Try someone else to cover my meeting.
That'll work. Don't be.
Sheriff, the sheriff's still here.
Sheriff, welcome. I'm here for you. On eggshells. You got a set of bracelets just your size.
I may have sent them out.
Bobby, would you hand that to me? Thank you, Charlie.
Yes, ma'am. All right, Item Seven, Open Seal Bids Twenty-Nineteen-Dash-Seven, Six-Month Coal Patch. Consideration of Possible Action Towards That Bid.
We have four bids.
Are you gonna sit around and watch these bids open?
Yeah, if they, if they need to get to a meeting or anything.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll be good to sit here. But I appreciate you coming.
Mark, thank you, sir. Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you, Mark. No, I'm sure we'll be talking some more. What do you, what do you do at ODOT or with ODOT?
I'm the Assistant Division Manager for Logan County.
Okay.
Right under Brian.
You were Shannon's previous assistant?
Yes, I'm President Shannon.
You've been, you've been there for a while doing that? Okay. All right. I know you.
Good seeing you, sir.
Good seeing you.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for having us. Are they all in?
Martin, super.
Thank you, sir.
Nice to see you.
Thank you.
They're really...
Thank you, guys.
This one here? Nobody.
Oh, what do you see in my picture?
Just Mr. Nobody.
Coal Patch.
Hymish, but I don't remember how to spell it.
Ask it. A-N-N-I-S-H.
In what? Are you with ODOT?
I'm with CE-C Engineering. C-E-C Engineering. Do you want?
I gotta stake right now. Who's this for? Think who it is?
Yeah.
You gonna put all this on a spreadsheet? I suspect that's gonna always... Ask. Yeah, he makes it made in the last nine dollars. Catch that little... Nine dollars. Eight fifty back. Mike, give me the copy of the priority list that we had.
No, I'm...
Back in August. Okay.
I figure all four of them are priorities.
That's how I pick the things.
I like my spreadsheet.
Sure.
So we'll table till December fifteenth?
Yes.
Did anyone read out who we received them from?
Mike's...
P and C. That's right. Mike gets to do that. You want it?
Troy, I think you can table it till December fifteenth.
Yeah, that's tomorrow.
That would be good, yeah. That won't work.
Very cool.
Just saying.
December thirtieth?
Thirty-first.
Crack Co., sixty-six-hundred North Industrial. Per ton, ninety-eight fifty.
I just read who bid.
Nine fifty for asphalt. Say again?
Read out who bid on it.
Just who bid on it?
Yeah.
Uh, okay, this one was... Uh, Craft Co.
Is that what you need to know?
Yeah, we just, we need to announce in the meeting who we received the bids from.
Keep working on it.
Craft Co. Inc., Logan County Asphalt. Asphalt Producers Inc. And PNC Asphalt Materials, Lincoln County. Okay, Item Seven's tabled till we get the spreadsheet till our next meeting. Item Eight, Open Seal Bid For Six-Month Rock, Rock Hall. Consideration of Possible Action Towards That Bid.
Four bids received.
Is there a certain reason why it's done every six months?
It's...
Just because pricing changes?
Well, it's, the bid, that's where it's set up in legislation, is we can do a six-month bid. I'm sure Troy's got a lot more detail on that if you'd like to.
The Quap Hall Company.
We can't bid for more than twelve months. We break it six months because of pricing changes. A lot of vendors are leery to quote twelve.
Which one they're done there?
Strut Town, too. We got Strut Town. I got Brown Transportation. Money handed me Quap Hall.
Deleese Brothers.
And Deleese Brothers, so this is the four.
Table for the very first.
Item Nine, Open Seal Bid, Six-Month Bridge Boards and Consideration of Possible Action Towards That Bid. Now, if we only got one bid on this one after we've had in the past, this might be quick.
I would be betting Rock Hall would heat.
We have one bid.
I bet it's gonna be KNO construction.
And it is not. It's from Texas.
Whoa.
I'm always wrong. You think that big sheriff or something?
Wedding man.
Yeah, he can be a wedding man.
He can be a wedding man.
They're a D and three hundred and sixty-five acres going windily blowing. Well, I'm down against this Texas thing, getting the boards up here from Texas, kind of tough.
Done the website, so.
That's one of them. That makes them tough, using the bridge boards, because they puncture tires. Horns, truckload lots.
Got my whole truckload of stragglers. I said we kick it in.
So, so I understand how I need to put this down. Were you motioning to reject based on the availability and the qualification of a truckload being not reasonable?
Yeah, but no, we'll look at it, then hang on a second.
Okay.
These prices.
Try this a bit.
On this one?
Yeah.
What's the cost for a truckload?
Leo Hicks Preasodin Company, Inc.
Depends on what you buy. Leo Hicks what?
Preasodin.
But what do you call a truckload? What size of truck they get? But, just so you know, sixteen-foot, three-to-twelve board is eighty-five-twenty, an eighteen footer is ninety-five-eighty-five, a twenty footer is a hundred-and-six-fifty, a twenty-two footer is a hundred-and-twenty-two-ten a piece.
How's that delivered?
Uh, if you buy, you gotta buy a truckload.
Right. So that's delivered price.
Yeah, but how much is a truckload? Is that a hundred boards? Two boards?
Yeah.
I say, I'd say reject.
Okay, that price is picked up.
Oh, that's picked up?
At Alto, Texas. Where it went to.
Should go there, Alto?
No. Alto, Texas.
I made a motion we reject bids due to the...
I'll second.
To the modifications of buying truckload and...
Have a motion and a second to reject bids. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
It's three hundred and eighty-three miles away.
Yeah. Wow.
Oh, wow. That's almost a hundred miles. That's, that's like the most Santa Teresa.
Yeah.
South of Dallas.
There you go. Go down there, spend a night.
What's next?
Item Ten, Seal Bid Number Twenty-Nineteen-Dash-Ten, Sixty Asphalt Products and Consideration of Possible Action Towards That Bid.
We have three bids.
What's sixty asphalt products?
Well, that's, that's supposed to say sixty months.
Oh, six months?
Six months.
Okay. Let me make a pen and paper, not five.
Six months. It was a typo?
Uh, just said sixty asphalt products. I thought there was a list of commonly used items. Shovels, rigs.
All right, we have here Atlas Asphalt.
For that holiday. We've got a bid from T.J. Campbell. One from Atlas, he said?
Yep.
And this one is from... Haskell Lemon. Those are the three. Those be tabled until our next meeting. Let me get those in the spreadsheet. Look here. Any further discussion on the six-month bids that we just finished? All right.
Please, come in.
I'm working on it.
Hearing none, Item Eleven, Consideration of Possible Action to Appoint Member of the Crescent EMS Board of Trustees.
We've been advertising for quite some time trying to find someone, and we finally received an application. I'm not sure of the name.
Meredith Gray?
Meredith Gray. Ain't got that profession.
I just want to...
I assumed it went out. It came over, that was just hand-delivered to me, so I thought it was out.
Personally don't know her. I know she's worked on for the EMS board at one time.
Okay. Well, we've been waiting a while, and we've got somebody that's wanting to serve. I maybe we approve the application, the appointment.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Item Twelve, Consideration of Possible Action to Approve Resolution, Calling for the Election of Free Fair Board of Directors to be held on February One, twenty nineteen.
So this was laid out, just as has been done historically, that the election would be held on February First from seven-thirty to three P.M. at each District Barn. One member from each district is up this year.
I'll maybe we approve.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item Thirteen, Consideration of Possible Action to Approve Resolution Accepting Donation of Two Hundred and Fifty-Two Feet of Sixteen-Eight Pipe from Manhattan Pipeline LLC to District Two.
All right. We, uh, we just had that Manhattan Construction go through Logan County for a gas pipe for one oak. And we were trying to make a deal on that to see if they had scrap pipe that would be able to be donated to the county for the purpose of culverts. And we did get some. We thought we were going to get more, but the guy didn't that I was communicating with decided, well, he's, he was no longer with the company, and I did not know that. So we hadn't thought we would be having additional pipe on with this, but didn't have to. So this is for their tax purposes and stuff. So I donated to the county to put a price on it as to what they thought it was worth. And so it would be a donation for them, from them. Anyhow, I make the motion that we accept this donation.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item Fourteen, Consideration of Possible Action to Approve Corrected Twenty-Nineteen Schedule of Regular Meetings.
So when I'm scheduled for next year and opened up my twenty-nineteen, I had scheduled the first meeting in January for the third, and that was incorrect. It should be scheduled for the first Monday, which is January the seventh. And that is the correction.
I'll maybe we approve second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Motion passes unanimously. Item Fifteen, Consideration of Possible Action to Approve Detention Transportation Claim for the month of October, twenty eighteen, in the amount of one thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars and six cents.
Make the motion.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item Sixteen, Discussion of Proposal of True Technologies for the Installation of Access Control Systems for Courthouse, Courthouse Annex and Door of Sheriff's Office in Consideration of Possible Action to Pursue Obtaining Access Control System. Discussion on this one.
It's pretty high.
That's free, that's for sure.
She'll have to drive to Texas to get it.
I don't know, have you read this? Just imagine, of course, this is pretty spread away.
I would make, just so that it was explained, this is for an access control system that will be handled via R.F.I.D. cards for employees on six doors. A six-door was added after they had walked through. There's been a request made to add this system to the walk-through door of the Sally Port so that the judges can use the elevator and get up to the second floor without getting caught on the other elevator and down and delayed from getting back on time and so on. So the six-door was added at that request to the initial quote that was five doors. This also includes the software, the printer, all that would be necessary for us to handle and control the I.D. cards and the access. This company is locally owned. However, they are not currently on state contract and are working to get there, but they're not there yet. We do have two that are on state contract that I thought, we had no idea how much. We needed a ballpark to know where we had to do as far as bids and things like that. So based on this, we will have to do a competitive quote, not a competitive bid. I thought if this board chooses to make this investment If this board chooses to make this investment and pursue, uh, which is one of the items the way it is, I would have the two other state contract, which are nationwide companies, uh, do a walkthrough and give a proposal or a quote to give us to work with.
What six doors?
The six doors would be the two ground level doors at the courthouse. So, what are the handicap door on this north side and the door that comes in under by the old sheriff that is not a public access door, is currently employee only now, just with a key. The walk-through door of the Sally Court and the three doors on this building.
I'll certainly support the project, uh, from a security standpoint and, you know, having I.D.s for county employees is something that... That I believe we need as well.
Sure.
So, I... I think within what we were just given that we should look at the other two state contract prices for doing... We can get the... The exact same end product, I guess, as what was bid here. So, that... That gives us an idea of what, you know, commercially it costs. I don't know if we can get it cheaper on the state contract until we look, but I think it's something we need to pursue.
I agree.
Sure. So, that was a motion and a second. Well, it says discussion. It says action to pursue obtaining access control system. So, that's what we're doing, I guess.
I did it that way because if... If this was financially something that we weren't going to be able to do, then we could stop it now. I didn't want to go forward if we weren't going to make this investment. Now, it's just who can do it the cheapest is kind of the way of it.
David, you got anything you want to weigh in on this or...
I mean, I think, you know, this is going to allow, you know, a couple of things is... Is national access control. Currently with the key system, we don't have any keys are out there. They've been duplicated. Um, yeah, this will give tracking control who's going in and out of the building as far as employees. Uh, if something did come up where something was vandalized or something, we have a way to kind of track it. Uh, it's just kind of the... The norm for making sure our buildings are secure and who's going in and out of them.
So, this system, if someone scanned their car or how it works, he doesn't register it in a computer?
Yes. Yeah, just like our system at the office, sheriff's office, as soon as we fob in, it's tracked as to who used the fob and, uh, we also have keypad. In case I get locked out, I got a keypad I can... I got a bad habit of leaving my keys on my desk, so I can keypad in as well. And that tracks... That... That number's assigned to me.
This particular company and proposal are currently doing the access control for the jail. This system, uh, when they did their walkthrough, they said they could integrate this system to the jails, to the security desk. So, if something were to happen with court or whatever with a specific code, they could actually lock down the doors of the buildings, uh, that... Because the systems would integrate together.
Well, if it's... If the system, I'm thinking it is, you can actually set that handicap door to lock at specific times.
Yes, yes, that's what he did say. The public doors can be on a time.
Yeah. So, that's... That's kind of neat to have. That's a neat feature. So, you can still have those... Those needed public access doors to be open, but by a certain time they... They lock, so nobody has access except those that have the permissions.
So, I think we've got a motion and a second to continue the action to pursue obtaining this either from a state contract or from a commercial vendor, depending upon what's the most cost-effective solution to do it. Is that what?
Aye.
All right. All right. Motion passes without objection. Seems how you're responsible for security of the courthouse. Thank you for hearing and putting on that shirt. Appreciate it.
I think it's all... It's going to be nice.
Yeah. Consideration of possible action on approving the following permanent road crossings for Coxcom Incorporated. We have three of them. Parallel East Forest Hills, parallels Pine Street, two of them parallel Pine Street, one of these forest hills. Yeah, I'm making a motion to approve. Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item eighteen, consideration of possible action on approving appointment requisitioning officers for various camps.
I'm sorry, we have none for eighteen and nineteen.
Eighteen and nineteen are off. Item twenty, consideration of possible action on consent agenda. I can't believe you were so nice when we were talking about C.E.D.'s right here.
Turned over a new leaf.
I've seen both sides of your leaf, I know.
Payroll.
Can't say that now, ain't nothing going on.
How was anything getting done?
Transplant. Oh, I forgot. Plankets.
I'll call you later.
Oh, you're late.
Are you off the road, Mike?
I'm actually on it.
Try and make sure the, uh, regular meetings are filed with the county clerk. I go to all the meetings and they always say it has to be filed with the county clerk, so...
Thanks.
I didn't say it on this one.
Thanks.
Thought I helped.
The statute requires that, so I wasn't doing redundant. That's just...
The school says it, the city says it.
The law requires public meetings to be filed with the county clerk by December the fifteenth to be able to be called regular meetings for the next year so that then, like, the schools don't have to file their regular meeting agendas with me for each month, then it's only special. If those... Any... The board does not get them filed by December fifteenth, then they can only have special meetings for the next year.
So, if you would have overlooked this one, seven would have got a special meeting.
Well, the seventh would have been a... Yeah. Yeah, we could have... We would have had two options. Go ahead and meet the third, which would have been a little problematic, or cancel it and hold a special on the seventh. Report, I'm going to do them this way since I forgot to put stickies because I had an early meeting and it's got to wait.
We need to sign all these forms?
No, just that front where Mike signed.
Every page you use.
And then initial every line. There you go.
Shady training, zero. Turned up. For untrained. I just can't win.
Well, that's fine.
Just can't win. It can go either way. It's a memorial then. Or maybe the other way.
Those are the end of consent.
I'd move we approve the consent agenda items.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second to approve consent. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item twenty-one, consideration of possible action on approving claims for payment for December twenty eighteen.
We will not have an item twenty-two.
Will we name them? Do what? Let me start. Does it not have the name?
Can. I testified.
I didn't say it was you. Well, here's the protection.
Paranoid.
Yeah. Monetize you paranoid.
Just because you're paranoid don't mean they ain't after you. Or something like that.
Yeah, Monet might be good at taking it. Because that's what he did to you. How come you're always on me? What I do is... God, you don't kiss me like that. Set up here to call you names.
Let you know about.
I have you whispering. Get ears you have.
Isn't that true, is man?
Yeah.
Troy's fault.
Yeah, that's it, see. He was before P.O. Disc attorney. Disc attorney. Hell, they don't you know you got to get a P.O. first? Yeah. Disc attorney. Disc attorney.
Oh, not supposed to...
Hell. Yeah, they're male.
Right.
Sounds like hell, boy, that's... Not in the home room.
They're still in the working mode, I guess. I didn't say nothing. I didn't say anything. There you go. There's your sign in. Again. I guess we're still learning that too.
Boy, if you're not something wrong, you know.
My company, it's like one side.
I don't know why we didn't do that. So, it's... It's all around, it ain't just for them.
Yeah.
Six dollars. See what I mean?
I didn't say nothing.
I ain't gonna say that either, because it's a few more to go. Oh, God, that hurts.
There you are.
I only had one.
I know.
How many do you have?
Oh, not... Not, uh... Need more.
I'll maybe we approve the claim.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the claims?
How many do you have?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item twenty-two.
None.
None on that, that's right. You said that earlier. Item twenty-three, Bobby, this is where you... And any citizen desiring to be heard, this is where you say that about the stamp on the, you know, with the... That just got to go through.
File.
Piling, yeah, that's it.
That's what kind of...
Citizen thing. You're all right?
That's what kind of...
This is the last meeting before Christmas. And C.E.C. would like to wish you all a very merry Christmas.
Well, thank you. Same to you, Bobby.
Yeah, thanks, Bobby.
Merry Christmas, Bobby.
Bobby and C.E.C.
Yeah, I've got a few updates. If you guys have time, Bobby.
Sure.
I have a busy guy. Our camera system starts install in our... Our detention center and sheriff's office, uh, Monday. Uh, we anticipate that lasting maybe through Friday. Uh, our... Our enhanced nine oh one that we've been dealing with for quite a while has finally got an install date. They're going to start installing that Tuesday. Uh, when we did the website, we also signed up for civic ready, the notification system. Me and emergency manager David Ball have been going through the webinars to get familiar with that system. Uh, and I expect us rolling it out to the public, uh, probably first of January. Uh, one thing I would like to do is get a shape file, you know, if we have a shape file for all the districts. So, if you want to notify people just in your district of a road closure or something like that, you guys will be able to do that. It's a pretty... Pretty easy system to operate. They also got an app. You can do it from an app on your phone. But I think we're going to get a lot of use out of that. And hopefully with the road closures, stuff like that, you guys can notify the people that are going to be affected and put in an alternate route. It's a good form of communication to our people. I think that's all I got.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Okay. Item twenty-four, comments, announcements, questions about the board of commissioners. Mike, you got anything?
Uh, yes. Um, I went to the A.C.O.G. meeting yesterday, uh, saying you were tied up and, uh, several things that came up. Number one, of course, is that AT&amp;T's network will be up, uh, December twentieth, but then now all the schooling and everything has to happen. But I'm assuming in January you're going to be up and running and ready to go?
That's our hope. It's... It's going to depend a lot on A.C.O.G. train schedule and availability and stuff like that. And I can assure you that... That we're not going to go live on the system until our people are comfortable and trained to do that. And if it's a thirty day process or a sixty day process, because we still have our nine oh one system that we currently have, but the enhanced obviously has a lot more bells and whistles and... And I... My main goal is making sure our staff's comfortable operating before we actually flip the switch and send it upstairs, if you mind, so...
Right. The... There is also a new system currently, uh, is something that's, uh, added to. The system's called Rapid S.O.S. And what that'll do is allow them to pinpoint a cellphone within seven feet of where it is.
Sure.
Which is pretty cool, I think.
Well, it's real cool, especially in the county.
Yeah.
We get, you know, somebody on the interstate calls in from a cellphone, they're trying to give us landmarks because they don't know them all markers and things like that. Once it got through... Currently, when they transfer to us, all we got is a phone call. We don't have mapping, we don't have none of that stuff. So, as soon as we get the new system, we'll be able to, if... If a caller calls from a house or a cellphone, we'll get a kind of a geo-mapping of where that call's coming from. That's... That decreases our response time tremendously.
Yeah. I could digress on all that essence, but I won't. Uh, but, uh, that's up and coming and that's going to be a real boon to our citizens, I know. Uh, also Matt Duke is the chairman of the board and, uh, apparently mayor of... Of Midwest City. And, uh, he was very complimentary on Don Hutchins and the awards that they gave to all three of his commissioners. And, uh, Matt Duke was the F.T.O. for Don Hutchins, so he taught him everything he knows. I guess.
At least he's going to take credit for it now.
Yeah. Right, right.
On the good side, he knows.
Yeah.
So, that was one thing. We also had a priorities. I don't know if you got the email and did the survey as to what you thought of as priorities that A.C.O.G. should be. Uh, but number one was, uh, announced and it was, uh, the SERB funding for roads and bridges. And right up there with it, I think number two was increasing the amount of money for REIT grants. Uh, other priorities, of course. And the impact for... On roads and bridges and rural areas by the oil and gas companies was... by the oil and gas companies was not exactly a high priority, which I was disappointed in. But it is what it is. I also, on this, at this meeting, as an addendum, was the REAP grant awards. And the board voted and accepted what awards were given. There was like 300,000 asked for, about 250 or so. I can't remember exactly the number that was there, but Crescent has been awarded 48,000, I remember, for the roof of their, was that common building, the, the, at the, at the city of Crescent owns that big building?
Community center.
Community center, that's it. They got that as well as 55,000 for a road, I don't remember which one. Meridian got Bond Street, 55,000 on that. And Logan County District 2 got the tail end of that, asked for 55,000 for Indemir Meridian Road from 105 to Industrial. But being on the tail end of what was left, we only received 17,000 on that, estimated 160,000. So in any case, I thought that was pretty good because I think we, we sucked up about half of the REAP money that was available this year. So I thought that was pretty cool. Anyhow, that's all I have right now.
Thank you. Bobby? I'm going to make it short too. I don't have a whole lot other than congratulations again, Sheriff. You guys did a great job on helping clean up the county. You and your folks, we appreciate the help. Okay, item 25.
I'll move with adjourn.
Second. A motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Where are we adjourned?